The premium changes, the commission.
Hama City Council Public Hearing Agenda, 5:30 PM, roll call please.
Councilman Diveterio.
Here.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Wells. Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Andrews.
Present. Public hearing item, none. Hama City, excuse me, Hama City Council Regular Session Agenda, 5:31 PM please, I mean, roll call please.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Diveterio.
Present.
Councilman Leon. Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Let us pray.
Eternal Father, we thank you on this day, we give you the glory and honor that is due your name, Father God, thank you for just who you are, thank you for your darling son, who you allowed to die in our place. So on tonight, the heavenly Father, we just honor you for who you are, as we enter out this night, and entering into a new month, exiting out of the 10th month, headed into the 11th month, that we continue to move in that what you have called us to do, continue to order our steps right now. If there's ever a time this country and this city and this state needs you, we need you right now, continue to rain down upon us right now, Father God, for we know that the steps of a righteous man are order. We thank you that everything tonight will be done decent, order, pleasing in your sight, where you will get all glory, honor, and praise. I ask you to continue to bless our city, continue to bless our fire department, our police department, cover them as they protect and serve us, continue to bless each city employee, continue to bless our mayor and his office and administration, continue to bless each council and the district that they represent in their homes right now, Father God. We thank you for it all, right now, and for that, we give you glory, we give you honor, we give you praise, we give you thanks, because it all belongs to you, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
At this time, I ask, excuse me, that all veterans and active military, please render the proper salute. Our pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I would ask for an approval of our October 14th minutes of our meeting, please.
Make a motion to approve.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Here.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Final adoption of ordinance, old business number one.
An ordinance declaring movable property as surplus and providing for a donation to the town of Independence of 1, 2011 Tahoe K-9 unit, Mayor. And Penta.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is a vehicle that, it's Unit 853, it has 165,000 miles on it, about 166,993. It is, it was a dog, a dog vehicle, K-9 vehicle, and the cost to transfer it back to the street doesn't constitute, as far as they're concerned, keeping the unit.
Anyone have any questions or concerns on this particular item?
I just want to ask, what, what, we replaced the engine in 2023, and then we're getting rid of it, I'm just curious, see, what, why didn't, why didn't we evaluate that, you know, before we did the engine, I'm just kind of a little curious, what happened with this one?
I guess in 2023, we may have been short on vehicles, and I'm not quite sure, I can't answer that.
Anyone else on this item? Pleasure to the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
No.
Old business number two.
An ordinance declaring movable property as surplus and providing for a donation to St. Helena Parish of 1, 2016 Tahoe K-9 unit, Mayor Penta Peta.
Unit 1086, 100,468 miles, AC is completely out, 12,000 to replace, the power distribution, distributing box is bad, and the vehicle won't stay running, apparently. Request to put it in the surplus.
Anyone from the public have any questions or concerns on this item? Anyone from the council? Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
You voted for Councilman Wells.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear you.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Old business number three.
An override of the mayor's veto of an ordinance granting an expanded conditional use to Sherri Brown Jackson to construct a duplex at 806 Mooney Avenue, Councilman Devon Wells.
Thank you. Well, what I'm trying to figure out, Mr. Mayor, is for you, how did we come up with even vetoing this matter?
Okay, so, not to have any confrontations, I just want you for a second to have an open mind and listen to me for a second. So usually when we do expanded conditional use, it's for trailers, and it's, we give them a conditional use for the person that's going to be living, usually an older individual, and when they, God forbid, pass, the conditional use drops, and they have to get the trailer off the location. And this location is going to be a fixed house duplex, it's currently an RS3, a residential single family. Now, it's not spot zoning, because there are some other duplexes right around that area. So the reason why, and Ron can attest to this, I guess, or keep me in the right direction, planning and zoning approved the change to RM2 is because down the road, when this was to come up, God forbid something happens to the owner, before they can do anything with the property and transfer the title, they're going to have to rezone it. So just placing it into the RM2 residential multifamily, they can move right into building it. It just helps them down the road, and is, for when they, when this person is no longer here, transferring either to the family or making a sale, they would have to rezone it. So I'm basically requesting, just thinking through this, that we're truly taking care of Ms. Sherri Brown Jackson and the people after the fact, and it's zoned properly now, so there won't be any issue from this point on. And we can go ahead, you, the council, can go ahead and take a vote, because it's already been approved by planning and zoning, to move it to the RMZ like she asked, and then she can get moving along with building the structure.
I want to make a comment about that, real quick, was just that, I'm kind of, you know, wherever the map's at, it's not up there right now, but you have, everything surrounding it is not, it's single, if I remember correctly, it's not up there right now, so.
Right.
To me, I mean, that's not really, I don't even know how it made it that far anyway, because to me, that's not really what you want to see, it's pretty much spot zoning on that side, so it shouldn't have even made it to this point in the first place, so I just don't, I don't understand why would any, you know, to me, what you're recommending is something else, that's, that's a problem.
It's not spot zoning, because there are some.
It's all surrounded, the whole, the whole, that whole side of the road is all zoned, single family. The whole thing. The whole RS3, that whole side right there, and it's stuck in between, so. That's not what you want to see, and so, I mean, it shouldn't even, it shouldn't even recommend it, but then when it got this far, it's kind of one of those things where, I mean, the lady who's the applicant, and, you know, it's just, to me, that's why I was just kind of, you know, I didn't understand, it's backwards from the whole get-go, and I don't, I don't see where that makes it any better either, so, but anyways, that was my comment on it.
Thank you, Councilman Sam. Mr. Mayor, an open mind. Think every time I come in here, God knows I try to keep my mind open. Yesterday, Monday, today, Tuesday, I couldn't sleep at all, but I like how you said, please have an open mind, and this the sad part about it. Dr. Sherri Brown Jackson, we're not talking about somebody walked off the street, she had opportunity to look up herself, expanded use. Ms. Frankie, sit right in the audience, didn't say nothing, with everything going on, Mr. Andre fixed the matter the best he could. The only person had something to say, and I still got to have an open mind, was Charles, that's not elected, the only one had something to say, and I say it's so sad, if you look at it, and Mr. Ron Matthews, he came by the house, and he asked me about it, and we talked about it, and I appreciate that, but I tell anybody that, before you vote on something, ride and see what you're voting on. And in the process, from, from Carvin to Palmetto Street, from the top of Mooney Avenue to the bottom of Mooney Avenue, is nothing on that side of the street is zoned for that. And so, conditional use, so this one of the words need to be taken out of what y'all saying, and. Far as conditional use on these mobile homes, I'm yet to see somebody old to come in here and ask for a mobile home. Everybody been getting mobile homes, being younger people, been getting these mobile homes, and the conditional use, this a word, apparently, we're going to have to take out now, because should nobody have a conditional use on a mobile home, a duplex, or nothing else, and this what she said. She trusts her councilman, and God knows, if anybody know me, I'm going to always do what's best for District 3, always, and I'm saying that to say, this is too small to even veto, it shouldn't have never, you shouldn't have never brought this up, it's something you and I should have talked about, and it's sad, plus to even be having this discussion now, and she said this here, just in case y'all forgot. She's finding somewhere for her family to come with, to come and stay when they come home. Her uncle got a house next door to me, and it's right behind me, that nobody staying in the house, when they come to town, they have somewhere to stay, that's all she asked for, she didn't ask to make no profit, she asked for, when my family come home, they can have somewhere to stay. And so, that's why I don't understand, and I tossed and turned even by putting this on the agenda, and all the councilmen had voted for it, and it's like, I don't understand, Mr. Mayor, and I'm going to tell you this here, I want you to have an open mind, please, when it come to District 3, and I said, we can sit here, and God knows, I could talk about this all the way till tomorrow, which will be Wednesday, so I ain't going to go no sleep Wednesday, but it don't make sense, when she sat there and said she was okay with it. Mr. Mayor, in our community, only one piece of property been sold outside of my area, and that was six years ago, other than that, everything be donated to the family. And so, when we do this conditional use, Ms. Susan can die, as long as they keep that meter on that trailer, nobody know Ms. Susan dead. So this conditional use, you have to be careful in what you doing, and I'm still trying to have an open mind, because I'm going to tell you, my mind be everywhere, and right now, it's not in a good place, and I have to think about District 3, that's why I take myself out, a lot of time when I come up here, because I truly, I got hell in me, and I tell everybody, once I leave from up here, I know who I am, when I sit here, and I know who I am when I'm at home, this something you shouldn't have never did, and I'm very disappointed in you.
Well, once again, that's a single family area, as Sam said, so why was even brought up to be a duplex, it was approved by you all, I don't know why that happened as well. If you want to put a duplex, change it and make it to where you can put an RM2 residential multifamily, it's a multifamily, it's duplex, it's not a single, single house, build a single home there.
That's not what she want, Mr. Mayor, so we can't tell people how to spend their money, but you know what, it's amazing how you said that, you know, and it sound good, this what she want.
Who lives in front of it?
I do.
Do you have a problem with a conditional?
No, I don't.
Okay, I mean.
She don't have a problem with it. So the problem, if we want to go back, Ms. Frankie should have stopped it in the beginning, but what I'm learning is, we pick people for these jobs that we can control, not to do what's right, that we can control, and that's what I'm learning, if you pick good people, I promise you, you ain't never got to stand over none of them. So it came before, I don't know if Mr. Ron was at the meeting or not, it came before them, they should have been able to look at it and saw it was a problem, Mr. Ron saw it was a problem, he came and talked to me about it, the other four on there are three, or two, I don't know how many was at the meeting at that time, they should have saw it was a problem.
It's always a problem, and what happens is, they go to their councilman, and their councilman says, go through with the pushing of it, so it goes to planning and zoning, they looked at it, there was a duplex not far from there, so it.
On what side of the street?
Didn't make it spot zoning.
On what side of the street?
That was in the area. So it did not apparently make it spot zoning, so they went through with it, if you didn't think it was right, you shouldn't have voted for it.
Don't vote for it.
Yeah, you the only one that thinks it was right, these folks voted for it with you, but that's not the right thing to do, it's a single family area, if you want to go ahead and change it, then change it to where it's done.
No, this the problem, Mr. Mayor, if you change that zoning, you open up the door for others on, that's right, so that's why the.
You're opening it up now.
No, it's not, it's not open, it's not.
Can't get rid of the duplex down the road.
Well, it'd be a conditional use, really, the conditional use right now, you actually could, because it'll go back to where it was, the conditional use, so the whole thing, bottom line is, the whole thing's messed up, it should have never been presented to the planning and zoning like that, they shouldn't have voted to approve it, if that's what they did with rezoning and like that, because it's right in the middle of all single family, now it's came to us down the road, the applicant wants a conditional use, the whole thing's a disaster, the easiest way really is conditional use, because if the lady passes or anything else, it just disappears, and, you know, it stays single family to where it is, so, I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's a problem we're dealing with today, because it wasn't handled from the get-go.
It's not going to change the single family, they're not going to go in that place and put a hole through the wall and make it all one single family, it's going to stay.
No, I'm saying, no, I'm saying it'll go back single family, as in, if it doesn't get built, let's just say if it doesn't get built, if the conditional falls off, I mean, it's, it's, it's only, the conditional is just her, that's it, nobody else, you can't sell it to somebody else unless it gets approved.
You can't, that's the key, you cannot sell it to someone else, you can't transfer title.
It's not going to be sold, Mr. Mayor, but you know what though? Yeah, it's funny.
It's not funny.
No, I'm saying, this the funny part about it, and Mr. Ron, them community, they tried to turn a house into a duplex, a house into a duplex, and if the community wouldn't came out and spoke about it, there was, from that point on, it would have been a bunch of duplexes in Villa West. She came before us, she doing everything the right way, Mr. Mayor, she have no problem with it, and I think, and didn't you tell me to have an open mind, I think you need to have an open mind also, and look at what's going on.
She's not going to have an open mind with it, because she's just like the individual in Villa West that wants what she wants, she wants a duplex, they wanted a duplex, I'm sorry, this is the zoning. Wanted to have it, change the zoning.
Mr. Mayor, we're not going to change the zoning, and I, and I wish, and see the thing about us, and I hope, I hope the council, other council members have an open mind, because this what's going on, by our community not being protected, we subject to anything.
This is protecting them.
It's, it's not, no, it's not, it's not protecting it, if you do it itself, so guess what, it's going to happen when I'm not in the office no more, somebody else going to try to do it.
People always try it.
So, yes, I'm going to leave it alone from this point, and I hope the councilman have an open mind, just like you asked me to, and see that you truly made a mistake tonight. So Ms. Lisa, when it's time to vote, could you please call on me first, because it is in District 3?
All right, it's not, if it's not zoned, just clarification, if it's not zoned for a duplex, how are they going to be able to build a duplex?
They get a conditional use, that's what we're talking about right now, they, she.
So the conditional use will override the zoning.
For her.
Only, only for that.
Person.
Applicant.
Once that person leaves, then it reverts back, then it reverts back to.
No, once, one, only the applicant can build a duplex.
That's it.
Once the duplex is built, it becomes a legally non-conforming structure, which means it's legal to be there, but if it ever gets torn down, if it ever damaged, you can't rebuild the duplex.
It goes back to the single family zoning, that it's already zoned.
So it's a, so it's a duplex in a single, I don't understand what you're saying, it's a duplex in a single family area, approved as long as it stands.
With her, yeah. Applicant, and doesn't go anywhere else.
Do it for her, we should do it for everyone.
I think that was part of where I was going to go, I've heard up here a couple times that different council members wanted the overlays, like I have in my district, which I had nothing to do with, they did long before me, that would completely stop something like this, where if people want single family residents, there's overlays that protects that, there's, you can't even bring this application if there was an overlay. I had an open mind at the last meeting, the last meeting, we were brought rezoning, there is a fair bit of deference to each council member's district when it's in their district, so I was prepared to vote for that rezoning, and then in that meeting, it got flipped to a conditional use, without any discussion, research, or anything, and I do want to commend the mayor and his staff on this veto statement, because in it, it sets forth why what we've done is not proper under our laws, which I think is rather important. There's a way that this could happen, they don't want it to be rezoned, I understand that, I wouldn't want it to be rezoned in my district either, so it wasn't noticed and advertised as an expanded conditional use, it didn't originate in a zoning commission that I know of, and that was all done very fast, so I regret my vote, because I think it wasn't properly thought out, and it was rushed.
I'm glad you said that, you the same one, the mind not open now, the mind is not open, you the same one on Edwin Neil, they tried to build a three duplex on 50 by 150 lot, you remember that, Mr. Ron? They tried to build three duplex, and you was all for that, and I said this here, if that go through, look at the can of worms you just opened up in the city of Hammond, you was all for that, in which they didn't even have enough property to even do that, three storage, no parking, nothing else, so you was all for the parking on the road, and this what I tell everybody, and be exact, I said it two weeks ago, with the man in your district, I say, sir, I thank you for reaching out to me, but whatever the councilperson want, in their area, I support what they say. So you the same one, can sit there and switch stuff around, but I love how you do things, and you know the good part about it, I'm not running for mayor, so when I vote, I vote with a pure heart and a clean heart, and the thing about you, you keep running with the mayor all you want, because that mind ain't open no more, and watch and see what going to happen, because November is right around the corner, not this November, but next November, so you keep that open mind, and you a lawyer too, because remember you said that, so you keep that same open mind, because guess what, the people in District 3, they don't forget, and if they do forget, Devon going to remind them, and Mr. Mayor, yeah, you on your way out, and so it don't matter what you say or what you do, but God knows, you a politician, it's in your heart. I'm not a politician, I'm for the people, and look, the only office I'm going to run for right now is city council, and when I get tired of running for city council, I'm running for representative, so I'm not going to stop, I'm going to keep fighting for my people, long as I got blood in my vein, and I love my people, and they got some stuff with them, but I truly love them, I'm going to keep fighting for them, and they need more people like me to keep fighting for them, and let them know what's right and what's wrong, but I thank you so much, you and Councilwoman Gonzalez, I thank you for your opinion, and sometime, opinion is just like a door, it open and close. Thank you so much for your opinion, Councilman Gonzalez, you keep voting with the mayor, and see what going to happen, both of y'all going to sit at home together.
I've got a lot of implications of threats and knowing what's in my mind, let me just say.
If I threaten anybody, got a police right there.
Let me just say that the Edwin Neil property, I think that you're referring to, was properly zoned for what they wanted, but there was a moratorium in place, which was why that was before us, so there wasn't a change of anything, nor a variance.
That was wrong. It was a variance, they wanted to put six, nobody from the planning, nobody from anybody went out there, until they were trying to put it out, they realized it wouldn't even fit on the lot, so they dropped it down to two duplexes, so.
It came before us, and I voted on it when your moratorium was in place.
Yeah.
That was the only reason I voted for it, because we were overriding your moratorium.
And you voted for the variance to give them the six, well, six units, three duplexes on the 50 by 150, that they couldn't even fit on there.
I don't think that's right.
That is, and you couldn't even fit them on there, so, but.
You voted for it, the best thing about the city council meeting, 10 years from now, five years from now, and I tell everybody, 20 years from now, you can always go back and see how somebody voted, thank you, so.
I do it all the time.
So we don't have to, we don't have to discuss this no more, from my point, so Ms. Lisa, we can move on, unless another city councilperson have something to say, because I don't want to sit up here no longer, because my mind not going to stay, keep staying open.
All right, anyone from the public on this item? Pleasure to council.
Make a motion to not approve what the mayor want.
That's a.
A motion.
That's a motion to override the veto.
Yes.
Second.
Councilman Wells.
Yes.
Councilman Leon?
No.
Councilman Andrews?
Abstain.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
No.
Councilman Divertorio?
Aye.
Introduction of ordinance number one.
Introduction of an ordinance to approve a request by Tyler Olivia to annex 17400 Highway 190 East into the city's corporate limits in accordance with a survey by Max Bowden, Inc., dated August 27, 2025. The property is to be zoned C-8H and located in District One. The planning commission hearing, no opposition recommends adoption five to zero. Mayor Panepetto?
Uh, this is an introduction. It'll be voted on at the next meeting. Tyler, uh, would not, could not be here tonight, but he will be here for the next meeting for the vote.
Anyone from the public on this item?
Stanley Campbell, District One. I don't, I don't have an objection to this, and I know this is the introduction. I just had a quick question. Is it the full 18.8 acres that's being annexed in, or is it the 1.5 acre that's on the agenda?
Read through this.
Should be a planning question. City planner here, or anybody with the planning? Looked at it yet?
It's 1.575 acres.
1.5, okay, that's it.
Anyone else from the public? I make a motion to introduce.
Second.
Councilman Divertorio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Resolution number one.
A resolution to approve annual alcohol renewals for 2026. Casey Dago?
Good evening, council members. Um, this is just the annual renewals for next year that comes before the council every year, as reported, um, and required by our city ordinances.
All right. Anyone from the public have any questions on this item? Anyone from the council? Pleasure to counsel.
Motion to approve? Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Abstain.
Councilman Wells?
Abstain.
Councilman Divertorio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Abstain.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Shut the city down.
Resolution number two.
A resolution to approve HRD truck stop located at 3151 Highway 190 West, Louisiana 70401, to obtain a permit to sell packaged high-low alcohol. The owner is HRD Group LLC. Casey?
Good afternoon. We've come up for you for, this is a new business, an existing business that's just under new ownership. So, it's just a change of name and business and owners. And Mr. Patel is here, if y'all have any questions for him.
Let's see, which one this one's in? This is, uh?
It used to be Star Max Star.
Star Max Star, uh, let's see, that one, which one? That's in West. Oh, about a Cracker Bell, okay. All right. Sounds, yeah, that's in my district, okay. All right, sounds good. All right, welcome. All right, thank you.
Anyone else from the public on this item? Pleasure to counsel.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Abstain.
Councilman Divertorio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Casey.
Resolution number three.
A resolution to accept the proposed health insurance package for calendar year 2026. Henry Powell?
Henry Powell, 202, uh, 202 East Morris Hammond. Good evening, council. Uh, this is our annual meeting to renew the benefits, uh, package for the city employees, uh, the medical, dental, vision, and long-term disability, as well as the funding for their HRA cards. This year, we received a 4% increase, um, over the current rates, which was very exciting to me, because I was anticipating a much higher one, based on the experience over the last few years. Um, we still would offer two plans to the employees. They could pick and choose. The city would pay for the Plan Two for the employee portion, and if the employee chose to have Plan One, they would pay the difference, just like we've done in the past. Uh, we would fund the cards, just as we had done in the past, uh, and have that break down in here also. Funding continues to be exactly where we projected it, year over year. Um, really no more, no less than what we had projected. Dill Insurance received a massive rate increase. Uh, we sent that to market, and MetLife came back with matching your current rates, which is what we left from last time for giving you a rate increase. So, it's just back to them. Uh, that would be the only change in benefits. The employees had that. We moved away from it because of a rate increase. Now, we're moving back. Um, so that is no additional cost. We would also move the vision back to MetLife. Um, that is employee paid. That's not affecting you guys. That's just an approval, because we're making a, a company change. That rate went up, uh, about 13 cents. The life insurance, which is currently with MetLife, had a slight rate, rate increase of about $100, $150 per month. We did have a lot of, uh, we did have several claims last year on that. However, the long-term disability, which you guys also fund, had a rate decrease, which would be a net savings to the city, uh, of around $6,000. So, it offset itself. So, that is the proposal. Any questions?
Mr. Powell, do we have, um, a lot of people choosing the other plan? I know, that was the first time we've really offered that. Is that something that you think they still want to be given that option?
I mean, it's not affecting anything. You do give the employees the option. There is 338 employees choosing the city-funded plan. There's 19 employees choosing the other plan. But they are, they do have a choice.
And they cover the difference in the cost, yeah. Okay.
Anyone else have any questions on this item? Anyone else from the council? Pleasure to counsel.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Divertorio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Number four?
Review and ratify bids received 101625 for Woodbridge South Outfall, project number 420-12506. Mitchell Roniger?
Hello. I'm here to present the results for the bid opening for the Woodbridge South Outfall Project. This is a drainage project, uh, to provide additional outfall, uh, for the Woodbridge subdivision. Um, the project includes installation of subsurface drainage and catch basins in the southeast corner of the Woodbridge subdivision, and it's gonna provide a, a additional outfall that's gonna connect to the existing, uh, drainage canal that's out there, uh, just south of the subdivision. Bids were open Thursday, October 16th. We had 11 responsive bidders, which was a good turnout. Uh, Lawson Benet Construction was the lowest responsible bidder, and their bid was under budget. Four of the lowest bids were under budget, so that was a good sign. Um, recommend awarding the Woodbridge South Project to Lawson Benet Construction.
Man, was there anything else tied to this project, or was it just the Woodbridge one? What's that one that we had tied together was, uh?
Westdale?
Yeah, that one with, uh, it was another, I thought it was Woodbridge, might've been a different one.
It was another area of Woodbridge that we're looking at also on the western edge of the subdivision over there.
So, it's another project?
It is.
Okay.
Different.
Okay.
It's, uh, mostly that, what you're talking about on the western edge. It's, um, erosion associated with the canal back there.
Okay. Different project coming up a little bit later, okay.
That we're installing for this, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else on this item?
I don't have any questions. Um, my name's Deborah Swinson. I'm from Woodbridge subdivision. I just wanna thank y'all for such a long time coming and for listening to us and our requests, and to have this done for us. I just wanna say thank you on behalf of our subdivision.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have something to say. Pretty much what the young lady just said. I wanna thank you, sir, because this been going on a long time, and Steve Leon, he definitely deserved it, because he been asking for this from day one, since we been up here. So, thank you so much that we finally can bring this here to a closure. So, thank you, sir.
Pleasure to counsel.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Divertorio?
Aye.
Number five?
Resolution one, accepting a $55,000, $50 grant from the Traffic Safety Grant Program for impaired driving, occupant protection, and juvenile underage drinking enforcement. And two, authorizing the mayor or his designated complete and signed related documents. Mayor?
Uh, this is something that we actually asked for $43,000, and we received the $55,000, $50 for the, uh, Traffic Safety Grant Program. The, uh, and there's no match to the city.
Anyone else from the public have any questions on this item?
Yeah, we got, we got a officer, uh, sitting in the audience. Could you come explain this to us, please, if you got time? Uh, how this here work, please?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Lieutenant Boudreaux, Hammond Police Department. This is, I mean, this is what you see all the time on the billboards, click it or ticket DUI enforcement, and, uh, they call it Jude underage drinking. Uh, we've done it for a decade or better now. Really good program, especially considering we live in a college town. So, it definitely, definitely knocks down a lot of problems that would get way worse in downtown and downtown area. And it's very good at taking care of protecting the city, because it's all. If you have any questions, I can try to answer.
I would say your radio on.
Ah, it works, so.
No, I just, no, I, I wanna thank you for coming up here trying to explain it to us, because I knew what was going on, but we got an audience in here tonight, and they get a chance to see exactly what's going on, and they get a chance to hear. So, thank you a lot.
Yes, I'll try to stay informed, at least.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Divertorio?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Number six?
A resolution, one, accepting a $16,230 grant from the Historic Preservation Fund Grants Program to move the application process for historic district reviews and approvals online, to make historic district resources more interactive, and to make information easier to find. Two, approving a $10,820 cash match from the Historic District and the Grant Match Fund. And three, authorizing the mayor or his designated to complete and sign related documents. Mayor?
As it says, it's a $16,230,000 grant, uh, received for the Historic Preservation Funds, and also a match by the Historic District of $5,410, as well as our Grant Match Fund at $5,410, splitting the $10,820 cost.
Anyone from the public on this item? Any questions or from, or concern from anyone from the council? Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Divertorio?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Number seven?
Resolution supporting the submission of a $10,000 application to the Artistic Transformations Revitalizing Challenging Spaces Grant Program for the installation of public art in Morrison Alley, and two, supporting a $5,000 cash match from the Grant Match Fund. Mayor?
As it says, it's a $10,000 grant from Louisiana Division of the Arts to help out with Morrison Alley, and there's a $5,000 match from the Grant Match Fund of the city. This is to, uh, hopefully get a sculptor, sculpture within that park.
Anyone from the public on this item? Anyone from the council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
How much money we have left in the Grant Matching Fund?
Uh, we should have a good bid. I'm not sure exactly how much it is.
That's not good. That what New Orleans went through, that same thing, what you just said, and they're.
We're definitely not New Orleans.
Yeah, they're $160 million in the red, so you have any idea?
We can get you that answer first thing in the morning. But we're not in the red.
Anyone else on this item? Pleasure to counsel.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Abstain.
Councilman Divertorio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Number eight?
A resolution to extend the ordinance of the moratorium on the acceptance of applications and issuance of permits or approvals for off-premises, signs, and billboards within the city of Hammond for an additional 90 days. Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Uh, yeah, so this is, um, I, I mentioned this in the last meeting, that I would be bringing this. The moratorium on bill, new billboards is, will be expiring before we have a chance to meet with, uh, planning and zoning, and so this has just given us more time.
Anyone from the public on this item? Anyone from the council?
Yes. Ms. Gonzalez, why we still need more time on this?
Well, in the last meeting, uh, we discussed it. Uh, Mr. Matthews was here. We were talking about, um, there was a lot of confusion on what, um, non-compliant billboards there were, so everyone wanted to see that. And then there was a gentleman who had questions about his particular application. So, there were just a lot of issues raised, and I think that Mr. Matthews had mentioned having a, a joint meeting, us coming to a work session, uh, which potentially was gonna be in November, but I understand that may not happen due to people being out of town. So, then we're looking into December, because they only meet and have that work session once a month. And so, obviously, that is gonna take more than what the time left on the moratorium is. It sounds like there was a lot of people with a lot of questions and more things to talk about, basically. Why we need more time?
All right, thank you.
Anyone else on this item?
Did, uh, Pete, did y'all get with the guy that was, came to the last meeting that had issues with, uh, permitting being issued? I think that he, that he submitted them before the moratorium went into effect, and said that everything, you know, was the same as y'all. that everything, you know, was the same as always has, whatever happened with that issue?
I didn't hear anything, so if it was submitted before, prior to, he was probably allowed to continue. If not, he was not allowed to. So I can check on that for you.
Yeah, check on that, to figure out what's going on with that guy, if he was right, y'all right, or what was going on.
Anyone else? Pleasure to the council?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Abstain.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio?
Aye.
Number nine?
Resolution requesting Louisiana State Police to conduct a review of the incident regarding Bobby Ray McCaskey. Councilman Andrews?
This item is being placed on the agenda, uh, due to the simple fact of receiving some type of information on this particular case that's before us. I know that it was stated that it was reviewed by the FBI, and now it is supposed to be with the 21st JDC. Uh, a while back, we even done a resolution to actually have the Attorney General's Office to look into this, and come to find out that they said, from my understanding, it was brought up in the meeting, that they were not, either A, they didn't receive it, or either B, they not going to really look into this matter. We've been receiving questions, calls, uh, throughout the community on this, and we just need some answers. So at this point, I put this on the agenda to have the state police to review and submit a review of their findings back to us.
Anyone have any questions on this item?
So the FBI did review it, and so did, has JDC completed their review?
Haven't heard anything back from them.
Pete, do you know?
Andre.
Andre.
I've not heard back, no.
But it's still in pro, it's still in process, or it just died?
With, with who?
JDC.
The 21st? JDC?
Yes.
I'm not, I'm not aware of anything with the 21st JDC.
Okay.
It was sent to the Attorney General's Office.
It was sent to the Attorney-
Attorney General's Office, and also the FBI.
And the FBI. Did, have we heard back from the Attorney General's Office?
I have not.
So it's in process?
I can't, I, I don't know what they did with it.
I, I understand, I'm just asking.
It was sent.
I'm just asking.
It was sent.
Stanley Campbell, District One. Um, Andre, the last time we talked, I think this was a couple meetings ago, I think there was, I think there was three different, um, statings about this particular case. I think first we said it was at the Attorney General's Office, and I contacted them, and it wasn't there. And then we said it was at the FBI's office, and I met with them, and they said that they couldn't disclose whether or not. Has anybody made any attempt to actually find out where this case is? This is something that's getting brought back to the, the city council every couple of months, and I think it's something that we need to take up and try to find out what's going on with it. As I said before, kind of, some of these situations, they ju, they just get lost in, in the shuffle, and until things die down. But, uh, we're going to make sure that this one doesn't, so we're asking the council and administration both to look into this and make sure that, you know, any cooperation that's needed with, um, the state police to make this, make this thing get expedited.
Michael Shous, President of the Greater Tansport Parish, NAACP. First, let me just, let me just say clearly, no one is against the Hammond Police Department. But we are trying to get to the bottom of this. Nine months later, there's still no answers, and no one can say clearly where this case is at. Where is it, the FBI? Is it the 21st Judicial District? Where is it, NASA? NSA, the CIA? Where is this particular case? Nobody knows. And it's beginning to look like a cover-up. That's what it's beginning to look like. Because this council has voted to give the police the things that they have needed to operate. Cameras, tasers, cars. But there's no transparency when it comes to a man that's been injured. And let me just say for the record, I asked his wife to bring him here today, and nine months later, we didn't have an ambulance to transport him here so that you guys can see the condition that he's in. And we don't want to get to the bottom of this in Hammond? Mayor?
My understanding is when you're dealing with the FBI and the AG and past experiences, when they-
Where's the body camera at? That's what I want to know. Where's the body camera?
Let me finish speaking?
Where's the body camera, Mayor?
When they do this, they look at it, apparently, if they don't come back with a verdict or, or, or whatever, or they don't go after someone that they think has done wrong, it remains apparently as an open case. Same thing with the AG's office, apparently. We, you can ask them for a report, you've done that, Stanley's been all over that, they don't give reports. We'll see what happens with the state police.
Why can't we get a clear answer on this? I asked this council a couple of months ago to subpoena the chief to see what this investigation is, and we really wanted to see where the investigation is, because nobody knows. And the only way to get the answer is, is to bring the chief here. Why hasn't that been done? I'm asking the council, why hasn't that been done? Is it, is it, is it that tough of a task?
I went through several different communications of trying to get the chief to come to the meeting without issuing the subpoena. I've talked with, with Andre on it, and, uh, I decided to go this route first.
Okay.
To see how this would go. If this doesn't go, I'm going to try that route. But I've, 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 I've sent emails, I have correspondents, where I've even asked him to come. The conversation would be strictly between me and him, that I would send the questions to him, that it would be asked, and nobody from the public would actually ask any question, it'd be straight between me and him. That didn't get anywhere. So, this is why-
This has been sent to Scott Perillo's offices? That you know of?
I'm, I'm only involved with the Attorney General's communication and communication with the FBI.
This, this is... This is so simple. This is really simple.
Well, if it's with Scott Perillo's office, and it's under investigation, they're not going to put out any information until it's completed. He may be the only office that comes up with a, a report.
Who said it's over there? You asking Andre, Andre said he don't know, and you don't know, so who, where is it at? I, I'm lost.
It's just at JDC, so is that the 21st JDC?
Who said it wa, uh, is it?
I got that, I got that information back in the email.
So it is?
That was, that was relayed back to me.
So that's, apparently, it's with the 21st JDC, Scott Perillo's office.
And that's why I decided to go this route. It'd be independent, somebody outside of this area, where the state police could put their eyes on this and get us a report back. Well, thank you so much, Councilman, uh, President Kip, and President Shous. You have a good point, and, Mr. Mayor, I look at you. And I look at you, Mr. Mayor, because guess what? You over every department head, and look like it's something that, that we're trying to cover up. And we shouldn't do this again. We did this with Ratliff. You and Lacy kept that head, and didn't give us the correct information. It was months later, before we was actually able to see the complete film of what took place. And thinking Mr. Shous and, and Kip, and Kip trying to do everything that he can to get something going, he reaching out with the emails, but it's so, it's funny, and it's so sad. I wish that his wife can bring him up here. And this the sad part about it. I just received a picture. This guy is still laying in a medical bed. Not the beds that we laying in, in a medical bed. And if y'all don't feel nothing, councilmen, Mayor, if y'all don't feel nothing, on what's going on, it's sad. What happened to having passion for the people? What's going on? I know the city shouldn't keep doing this. It is so sad. I, if it happened to my brother, my sister, my uncle, AT, I'd be doing whatever I can. And the best thing about this family, you don't see them riding nothing? You don't see them burning nothing down? They just asking for information that they can't even receive, and they taxpayers, they stay in the city limit, they stay in Hammond. And we sit up here like our mouth closed, we scared to say something, we don't want to step on nobody toes. But if that was your mother, if that was your father laying in the bed like that, you would say something. It's so sad, when we gonna stop? This shouldn't go until next year. We shouldn't have to even vote on this. The chief can come up here anytime he want, and it's a lot of cameras up here. And it's amazing, Kip started reaching out to him. Yeah, I have an open mind. Kip started reaching out to him, and it's like, he quiet. How could you have a department head so darn quiet? What's the holdup? What's the problem? Is he covering up for somebody? But Channel 17, every time I look here on Channel 17, right now, he got downtown, uh, uh, opened up downtown, for the police can walk downtown. This is what I asked for when he first got in office, walk in the neighborhood, know the community. This is what I asked for from day one. And I can say this, and I ain't going to say it too often, I'm one of the clowns that voted for the clown. And it's so sad, that he sat there and told all them lies, but yet, doing totally different, running for every little situation. And then when Gonzalez and them have a concert downtown, you got 33 officers that the taxpayers got to pay for. It don't make sense. We can't keep running, we can't keep hiding.
Good evening. Melvin McGary, uh, recent retired major, police officer, did 30 years. And, uh, there seemed like there is no urgency with the McCaskey case, and it's very important, and I think tempers are flaring because of that, because nearly gone on into a year with this. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I worked through my 30 years of law enforcement, my recent retirement, I worked very close with a guy with the Federal Bureau of Investigation, I worked very close with the Louisiana State Police, everything from their narcotic agents to their homicide detectives. You name it, I've worked with them. Uh, and I do know that here in Hammond, it's a chief, it's appointed chief, and he's not elected. Uh, if you have any question with the FBI, or you have any question with the Louisiana State Police, et cetera, those guys don't have a problem with transparency. If, if they know, if, they know that's supposed to be something said or done on a case, and if that chief contact them and ask them, where are you in this case? They will let you know. But the line is drawn, is do you bring that to the public? Now, do you bring it to the public? Because that's what, that's what they want. They, they want to know about their loved one. And, uh, so, uh, my question is that you asking the Louisiana State Police to review the McCaskey case? You asking them to review what have already been done with the city of Hammond, or seems like they're the only one that's done any kind of investigation? Or you asking the Louisiana State Police to conduct their, come in and conduct their own investigation? That's my question, and I'll be seated.
Major, uh, thank you for your service. The FBI, it's going to them. The Attorney General's Office is going to them. Apparently, it's with Scott Perillo, it's going to him. So, we're being transparent, we're doing what we're being told to do. And the agencies, like you said, if they're not putting anything out there, I'm not sure what that says about them and what they're seeing, but that's usually generally what I've seen in the past. When they don't go forward, they don't close a case, apparently, but unless something comes up to where they go after someone, this is what we get. So I don't see a problem with sending it to the state police, we send it everywhere we want to send. I understand, and I'm sorry for what had happened to your husband, dad, not sure what it is, who are you, ma'am?
Just, just a gratification on my end, all that, what you want to get that.
I'm, I'm going to get to that in just a second. I got you.
I'm not related.
Okay.
Okay. So, I just wanted to point out that when we were-
And give us, give us your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Nicole Nichols. So when we were talking about the art, you were very clear on the fact that we were not in the red. Even though you didn't have the numbers, you were very clear that we were not in the red. But all the time that we're talking about this case, everything is apparent, apparent, apparent. Apparent is uncertainty, so it doesn't sound like we're seeking answers, we're not saying we're going to come back to the table for answers. So, we're clear on some things, and some things, we're just, it's just apparent.
Well, numbers are clear, numbers are an accounting. This has been sent to different agencies.
Have you talked to those agencies?
No, Andre has talked to a few of them, I believe.
Andre talked to?
Do you talk to Andre?
All the time.
Okay, so, but, but you don't know until you ask him when we're here.
When it comes to things that go to lawsuits and attorneys, everything goes through the attorney.
Okay, well...
So until I get, because when it's something that would come to a disciplinary act, I am the last person to see the final reports and have to sign on whatever discipline, if there is any, to be done. So, I am, that's the process.
Well, the last thing I'll say is, this council, I've seen a couple of meetings, and then this meeting, when money comes to the table, grants and all that, and all the things that we're putting up, there's a lot of, there's no questions. We just, I, I, I. But when it comes to things like this, everybody has a question as soon as, and that's just very surprising, very telling, and it doesn't look like everyone is wanting answers, but the family is asking for answers, and we're just requesting that we do move forward and get someone to look into this investigation.
Understood.
Hi, I'm Leon Maryland, I have but a few questions. I'm going to pose them to Mayor Pete and to Mr. Andre.
Mayor Pete, when you say that the investigation is with the-
Can't hear you on the mic, sir.
When you say that the investigation is with the FBI or something like that, which investigation are you referring to? My question is, and are you talking about the investigation of the criminal charges that led to the man's arrest, or for the physical injuries that he sustained?
Andre?
Well, with respect to the FBI, the entire matter from beginning to the end, as it existed-
Yeah, but it's two separate cases, is it not?
They, they looked at everything.
No, 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 no. I'm asking you, Andre, listen to me carefully. The incident revolving his arrest, that's one separate matter. The, say, personal injuries he sustained, that would be a separate matter, right?
The incident-
Yes or no?
Well, it is, it is two separate things.
Thank you. So my question is, which part is being held up? And more to the point, if this arrest happened nine months ago, and there have been no criminal charges, is the, is there a criminal cho, case in place for the arrest? Yes or no?
I'm not going to get into yes and no, Mr. Maryland, so, so let me say that.
That's a yes or no question, I mean, audience, does, does anyone here have a problem thinking that's a yes or no question?
Yeah, yeah, well-
I mean, anyone?
Leon.
Does anyone have a problem here? So, Mr. Andre, yes or no?
Leon.
Councilman.
That, that part is not on our agenda due to-
That's why I turned away from the mic, so it won't be on here, but my question-
Due to the open, uh, meeting rooms, I can only deal with what I have on here right now.
And what you have on here relates to that case being, being presented to the, um, state police. So my question is, which part of the case is it? So that would be on your agenda, would it not? Thank you. Mr. Andre?
Ellen, uh, public comment is not question and answer session. Ellen, uh, public comment is not question and answer session. I, I will state again to the council, as I've stated, everything was turned over to the FBI on March seventeenth, as it existed at that point. All of the, every, every piece of paper was a C.D. disc that was picked up from my office. They had all of that information for their purposes to conduct their review as they thought appropriate.
Was there a video on that CD?
I'm not gonna answer what was, what was sent to them. All the information of concerning that, as of that point, was sent to them.
Well, other member of the public, how can we find out what is the status of the criminal case? Because if there is no criminal case, then there would be no legitimate reasons under Louisiana statute to withhold a video, correct?
You're talking about the criminal case of Mr. McCaskill?
Yeah.
That's pending in the twenty-first J.D.C. The criminal case against Mr. McCaskill is pending in the twenty-first J.D.C.
So is the investigation closed?
I'm not, I'm not a part of the investigation, not involved in the investigation. That matter is still in a criminal proceeding.
So, Mayor Pete, is there, is there, is there a criminal investigation still going on? Uh, no, he, he said he didn't know, but you're the mayor.
I don't know either, if he doesn't know, I don't-
Well, could you have the police department come here and explain it to us?
The police department's not gonna say anything other than what he told, uh, the, the chair. It's with the twenty-first J.D.C. And when it's under investigation, they don't generally give out information.
But if you told him, well, you, but you have the authority to-
I don't have the authority to tell them-
Yes you do, yes you do.
To give out information.
Well, don't you have, wait a minute, isn't the chief of police there at your pleasure?
Correct.
So you can fire him at your pleasure?
Listen, when it comes to legal cases, you don't just openly do these types of things.
I know that, but my question is-
As I said before, we're transparent. FBI, A.G., now the twenty-first, uh, J.D.C. So I'm sorry it's taking a while, but that's the process. Nothing in government seems to work fast enough for any of us, I agree with you.
So my question is, to elude everyone, can we get the chief of police here to answer questions?
He's-
Under oath? No, as the mayor, as the mayor, you have the authority to do that, do you not? If you said, "Show your butt up here", he has to come there. So my question is, are you willing to satisfy everybody's questions and have him come here? Yes or no?
No.
Thank you.
Pamela Denise, my question is to you, the mayor. What did the city find? Cause I know they answered to you, what were the city's findings?
As I said before, I will not see any findings or anything to the very end. I'm the last person to see, because I have to act if there's a disciplinary act. So until it goes- No, I haven't looked at anything. I'm the last person to see all paperwork and camera and everything else.
All right.
Getting back to, just getting back to the res- getting back to the resolution. I believe I heard the mayor say at least three times that he has no problem with sending this to the-
Not at all.
State police. He said it again, so-
I have one-
And this resolution is asking just that, that we send it to the state police. Seems like the city is already in agreement of doing that. So, why do we need to belabor this any further?
I have one question, Andre. I heard the word investigation come up. Do I need to make an amendment to remove the word review to investigate?
Well, councilman, they're gonna do what they want to do with this, right? You're gonna make a request of them, they can review it. My, my understanding is, if these agencies see something of the information that's been provided, and if they see evidence of what could be criminal conduct, if they see evidence of something that could be unlawful, they take the appropriate steps to file charges, to do investigations, to do whatever they think is appropriate. That's their professional responsibility.
All right. Moving, if I make a motion to-
I just had one point, and I'm sure I'll, you know, people have something to say about this. My only issue is how this is worded, is there's no date on here. We all know what the Bobby McCaskill incident is, but it all, all it says is, "Incident regarding Bobby McCaskill". There's no date, it doesn't say Hammond Police Department. So, I, I'm just saying, like, when this goes to state police, they may say, "What the heck are you talking about"?
What, what do you really want, Kip? Cause like, you said you asked an Andre about investigating review, but I mean, do you want it investigated? Do you want it reviewed? I mean, what details, uh, is there an attachment or anything?
Right, all it says is, "City clerk to relevant information", I mean-
I would imagine, Andre, you'd give him all the information you've given to anyone else. Everything that you have, correct?
Yes, I can give the same, same information I sent to the Attorney General.
Everything you have.
They need some kind of direction, that's my point.
Are you familiar with that, what they gave, uh, the other agency?
All I know is everything was on the drive, or either it did.
I got one more question. With all the information that, that Andre has and that he's gonna provide to the state police, Andre, can the council, uh, request that same information that you have in your possession? And why don't we cut out the middleman? If the, if, if the president of the city council, um, is he not privy to that information?
No, it's a criminal law enforcement matter, there's still criminal charges pending.
Okay, so if there are still criminal charges pending against Mr. McCaskill at the twenty-first J.D.C., how are the twenty-first J.D.C. looking into the matter? That's a conflict, you can't, you can't prosecute a man and look into the matter that happened to him and him and all that at the same time.
I can't answer for that, but I will tell you, in the criminal process, I, I presume Mr. McCaskill has a lawyer. Within that criminal process, his lawyer can obtain all the information through discovery in the criminal process. So that information would be available to Mr. McCaskill through the criminal process.
Okay, so, one last question I'll set out. So, you say you're willing to take all of the information that you have and give it to the state police as any other agency? Are we talking about the state police doing a review to what Hammond have already done in their investigation? Offshore, their investigation is closed in nine months? Or are we asking Louisiana State Police to take this information and conduct their own investigation that we've gave you and give us finding?
That's what-
That's what I'm asking, that we give them the information and that the state police review their own, that information that's given to them, and give us back their findings from?
Might just need to clear that up in a, in a-
All right, that's, that's, that's what it, that's what it say. Anyone else? I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Resolution number ten.
A resolution requesting the Louisiana Legislative Auditor to conduct an audit of the Hammond Police Department, particularly but not limited to details. Councilman Andrews?
Well, actually, it is a little bit more into where you hit the hyperlink as well. But there's been some, uh, information that I've, that I've asked for through email communication. There's some that I have received, there's some that I was still waiting on. But, uh, I've received some, some questions and concerns from constituents about certain things dealing with the, within the Hammond Police Department. So I decided to go ahead and put this item on to have the Legislative Auditor to come in to do their own review of their department. Anyone from the public have any questions on this item? Anyone from the council?
I'll bring up the same issue I had before, that there's a severe lack of detail and information in this resolution to tell the Legislative Auditor what, what you're asking for. Is there a timeframe? It's just, it's just very vague, so I, I don't, I think if you were to send this to them, they would say, "What are you asking for"?
And what brought this, what brought this about? I mean, I, I just saw this, you know, when it, when it came through in the-
Again.
In the minutes.
For the last two months, I've sent in requests on some information from their department. Some questions were raised by different constituents, asking me questions. That's why I submitted the questions to them. I didn't get a rece- a receipt on information that I was requesting. So, I decided to look at it from a different angle, have a independent group come in to look at this. And it's easy just- And, and, and I'm sorry, DeBarn- Oh, no, I'm sorry. But I have to say this. And I understand your question, you're coming from Steve, but there are a lot of things that come across here that I don't know nothing about until I see it when I get ready to put it on their agenda. There are certain things, a lot of people don't even come to discuss with me. And I'm not in the position of playing games or anything with anybody. To be honest, I'm sick and tired of a lot of stuff. Point, you know, in, in general. Even with what we just went through. People come and ask questions. They want answers. And a lot of folks think that a lot of stuff up here is a lot of games. Now, I can't speak for a lot of people, but I could speak for myself. If someone come ask me a question, I'm gonna do my hardest to give them an answer. Whether they like it or not, whether I get hit or not, it comes with the package. When I s- signed them papers to run, I knew what the job was gonna, part of the detail was gonna come with the package. I'd have been in supervisor's position. I know what coming, what came with the package, when, when you're doing a certain thing with employees. I just want to be able to provide some answers for folks. And I'm only going across the avenue that I feel that is the appropriate way to do that. So if it needs to be changed with some other words in here stating, uh, or a time limit on giving to them to make their review, I'm open to that.
Perhaps if there was a time, I mean, I don't know what complaints you received, so, you know, and just, all I'm saying is the detail. I, I don't know what, what you're trying to, what questions you're trying to address. So I can't tell you what it's lacking to address those questions, is all I'm saying.
I'm sure, though, I asked if they want specifications, so, I mean, if, just, I mean, if that's what you want, just go, you know, I mean. If they want to know a timeframe, then they'll ask, and you can tell.
And it's, it's amazing, you know? And it's, it hurts. It hurts because this is something that took place in his district. And this is something that he have to hear pretty much every day, Councilman Andrew. And it don't make sense to, to ask a thousand questions to him because he trying to find out himself. And so, and I see you, Ms. Gonzalez, uh, you play lawyer all the time, and which you is a lawyer, so this is something that you should have been reaching out to him?
Saw it Thursday.
Yeah, so I'm glad you said that. I'm, I'm tired of getting all this stuff at the last minute, so you can't talk about nothing till you get it. But he trying to do the best he can to deal with the city of Hammond and deal with his district. And until something take place like this in you all district, you won't ask not one question. Cause you gonna have the answer, y'all gonna have the answers. Cause, uh, Gonzalez, you got the mayor, you got the engineers, everybody in your district. So, y'all gonna make everything smooth in y'all district. We don't have nobody in our district. So when we up here, we by ourselves, trying to find answers, trying to make phone calls. You just heard the man say, "Look at all them emails he sent", and getting no answers. And, and this is a man that, he actually worked for the city of Hammond. He supposed to work for the people, not just the mayor. So, that's one of the problems that will happen, so he done reached out, he done did all he could do. The man is tired, and he still trying to do something. And so, either you work with him, or stay away from him. And if he call me, I'll tell him, "Okay, let's go by it this way, let's go by it that way". And we pretty much know, and I see it. The city already did their investigation, whether it was good or bad, which is gonna always be good when it's pertaining to the city. Don't nobody want to work behind nobody because most of the evidence been messed up, smeared over, and everything else. And we all know this, in law enforcement, they would tell you that they should have been picked in the beginning. If we want to be transparent with everything that we do, we should have asked the state to come in in the beginning. I like what that young lady said, when it come to the grants, we don't know how much money it was. Yes, yes, yes. But when it was time to ask question about Bobby, huh, Andre? I don't know. Mayor, I just sent everything to Andre. And it's sad, it's sad. We need answers, he trying to do the best he could do. He couldn't get the, he couldn't get the mayor to send the chief in here, to even ask the chief question, so, we tired. And I'm saying we, because same thing happened in my community. A guy got shot in the mouth. We need answers. We shouldn't sit up here every day and don't get nothing close. When you're black and staying in Louisiana, it's scary cause we don't know what gonna happen to a black person. From the state to the local. We scared, every time we get in a car and drive. We scared every time we go to a store. I said earlier, passion, just feel something, and I know you can't, cause you not that, you don't have it in you. But feel something what we go through every day. That's it, Kip, whatever you looking for, whatever you want, say what you want and mean what you want.
Is there anyone else from the public on this item? Anyone else from the council? I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Wells?
Yes.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Reports, mayor?
Uh, we actually have about, uh, five hundred and eleven thousand dollars in the grant fund, Grant Match Fund. Halloween is Friday, between eight, five to eight. You would be aware of the children and folks and families crossing streets, especially after dark. Slow down, um, watch out for the pedestrians, please. Enjoy the holiday.
Any council reports?
Uh, just made a comment, uh, uh, after many years, Villas West is finally getting some, um, Atwell Atmos Gas is running gas lines throughout the subdivision. They, they've had it throughout the edges, um, in some places, but, uh, I think by the end of the year, uh, they're, they're slated, they, that, what they've told me without any delays. So, if there is a delay, just let me know, but it, it's still coming. But I think they want to do it before the end of the year, so that's good news for, for Villas West. They'll be able to tie into, uh, gas services that are out there, so.
Any other reports?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, checking on those tree stumps on Carbon Road fourteen oh six, uh, sir?
We're not gonna grind any stumps that aren't in the right of way. If it's in the right of way, we'll grind it. We're not grinding stumps on private property.
No, Mr. Mayor, it's not, it's not my property now, and the city cut those trees.
I made, uh, I actually took a ride with Robert and asked him about, cause after you sent the email, I said, "Let's go look at these stumps",
Uh-huh.
And the ones that he showed me were not in a, were not in the right of way. So what's the address you're talking about?
Yeah, fourteen oh six Carbon, them same ones y'all looked at, and you know-
I hadn't looked at them.
Oh, you said-
Robert looked at them and said they were not in the right. I went yesterday, with, day before yesterday, with Robert, and we looked at-
And who, who is Robert, Mr. Mayor?
Robert Williams.
So this the same one?
If it's not in the right of way, we're not-
No, oh, no.
And we're not gonna grind.
Yeah, if it's not in the right of way, don't grind it. But this the same one was letting somebody else drive the city truck? This the Robert you talking about? Unauthorized user, this the Robert you talking about? Cause what I'm saying is, it's amazing, you got a lot of confidence in Robert. Whenever it come to District Three-
Is that true, though? It did, is that true, uh, mayor?
Yeah, yeah.
He was driving, he was, what did he do now?
He let a woman drive a city truck.
That wasn't a city employee?
Yeah, she was a city employee.
She was a city employer.
Still, he was reprimanded for that.
Yeah.
First offense.
So-
What is his position, a department head?
We, we shouldn't be talking about personnel matters in an open meeting.
Yeah, well, Mr. Andre, Mr. Andre, yeah, we shouldn't do a lot, but you know what? When it come to District Three, whenever we asking for something, I don't ask for this stuff. The people ask for it. Whenever they ask for something, I have to fight for everything.
Understood, I just want to protect the-
Yeah, no, no, but, but guess what? I like to protect everything, I like to protect District Three. You know, you the same one said it was okay for Dr. Brown to do that, and the mayor override you too, just as well as me. So, look like your opinion don't matter no more when it come to certain things. But, uh, I'm saying this-
But I'm saying this here, Mr. Mayor, I asked about these trees. If it's not in the city right of way, please don't cut them. And that's the truth. But if they in the city right of way, please, let's get them grinded. The streets. Carbon Street, I need a vacuum truck to come through there and clean Carbon Street. I need a vacuum truck to come through there and clean Reed Street. They got a sidewalk, they can't see the sidewalk anymore. I need the vacuum truck to come clean Garrett Street. I need a vacuum truck to come clean Washington Avenue Street. But if anything, not in the right of way, Mr. Mayor, don't do it. I don't, one thing I can say, that I don't wanna take nothing from the city. Just do what's right. That's it for me, uh, councilman.
I'd like to thank, uh, the city for completing a project on Darrell Drive and, and, uh, and Whitmore Acres. That one was in long waiting. It was a drainage, drainage issue there that, uh, we've had for some time, and they, they got it, they recently got it completed. All the sod was laid this week. I mean, it just looks really, really great. And I'd like to just add some positive stuff. I mean, we had an air show a week ago. It was all the buzz of Hammond. There was, you know, people from all over that came out. And I, I mean, I'm sure the mayor could give us even more information, but that was a major thing in Hammond for, for a community of our size. That was a major thing. Got Halloween going on, had Trinker Trunk downtown. And get out sometime and go ride around. There's a whole lot of positive stuff. Uh, the restaurants are buzzing. I mean, you, you, if you don't have a reservation, you can't even get in. And that's in Hammond. Look around, folks, there's a lot of great things going on. You come here, week after week, and, you know, it's just bash the city, bash the city, bash the city. And, and I get that, but let's also keep things in perspective. There's a lot of great things going on in Hammond, and you don't have to look very far to realize it.
That's all I got. I just, um, wanted to make sure everyone knows there's the Boo at the Rec, which is the, um, Hammond Recs Halloween Celebration, which is on the 30th, the day before Halloween, from 5 to 7 at the Rec Center. And then also, uh, with Veterans Day approaching, they're doing their annual Veterans Lunch, which is on November 6th at 11:00 a.m., and they will be honoring Gold Star families in the area. So it's a, a great celebration and show of respect to them. And thank you to the Rec, Rec Department for such a great job, mayor.
Also, Hammond High will be having their homecoming festivities are going on this week. Thursday, they'll be having their homecoming parade. Yes, uh, Friday night, they'll be having their homecoming football game. Um, I've decided to put on the agenda, uh, to mention it tonight, that our November 11th meeting will be canceled due to the city holiday, and I've put on the schedule to do it the following week on the 18th. I'm asking everybody to check their schedules for that. That will probably be the only meeting that we have for the month due to the fact that the following week after that will fall with Thanksgiving. So we'll be looking at the 18th at 5:30. Uh, one other question, man, and I'll just follow up with an email on this as well. Dealing with, uh, I, I don't know if any other council members have, but I have been getting a slew of phone calls when it come back down to these water bills.
Oh, yeah.
I've had people tell me that they looked at their usage, and the usage was the same, but the amount was different. So I, uh, I don't, don't know what's going on in that area, but-
We've been dealing with a lot of it. Obviously, the rates changed. And there's a range that people can use, so the bill won't change if it's within the same range. But since the rates have changed, there's a lot of complaints about it. So we've been doing a lot of rereads and a lot of educating to the folks about why their bill is what it is. But yes, you're right, there's been a lot of phone calls on it, which we expected.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Come on.
Meeting adjourned.